Okay, it's now four o'clock on this, on this clock, it's four o'clock. So we'll go ahead and call to order the August 17th, 2015 City Commission meeting, and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
I'd like to invite all who are able to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Okay, there are no awards and proclamations at this time, so we'll start with our citizens' forum, and this is an opportunity for individuals to come up and speak on any item not on today's agenda, and just please give us your name, address, and what organization, if any, you are representing.
Okay, I'm Greg Stevens. I'm, I live at 842 South End, and I'm representing Salina Downtown, and, excuse me, there's Penny, she's a downtown gal, and North Salina Community Development, and NAACP. On Saturday, we gave away bags at Shop a Lot, Save a Lot, excuse me, and we had a great time. We just happened to have a few extra ones left over, and so we would like to, on behalf of those three groups, say thank you to City Commission, Gary, who has helped out a lot with all the groups, and City Manager, City Attorney, and all those people that signed the petitions, those people that are shopping there, and the other supporters here in town. So we'll go ahead and give you guys a bag, or when you leave work today, you can drop in there and grab yourself a few groceries.
All right.
We can be the true bag people then. Bag lady now.
We're bag persons.
Yeah, bag person.
And it looks like there's a book, a bookmark on there from Salina Downtown. Bookmark, and Salina Downtown, and NAACP, and North Salina Community Development. So, thank you all very much, and I think everybody, especially the residents in that neighborhood, are excited about that store, and so thank you guys, and once again, it gives us an opportunity to thank staff for all the hard work they did in making that a reality. Okay, do we have anyone else for citizens' forum? And we have none, so we'll move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2016 Budget, 5.1A, Second Reading Ordinance Number 15-10792, Adopting the 2016 Budget, and 5.1B, Resolution Number 15-7272, Establishing Fees for Services in the Comprehensive Fee Schedule.
Okay, well, this public hearing was carried over, so we're currently in our public hearing, so we'll have, do we have staff report, or are we just looking at Mr. France? Just an update, perhaps?
Hopefully this is...
You didn't look too, you didn't look like you really wanted to come up, so I was giving you every, every opportunity to say no.
Hopefully this is the last time on this issue.
Okay.
This is the formal adoption of the 2016 budget. Just covered some things briefly. Total expenditures, $72,414,948 for 2016. The mill levy will, is proposed to stay the same, as best as we can tell with the estimated valuation we have currently at, at the 27.08 mills. And of course, that being the case, if the homes valued the same, the taxes would not change. Generally, values grew about 1.4%, so there might be some modest change in one's taxes if their home value changed by the average amount. You know, as we've dealt with a number of fiscal challenges over the last several years, those have moderated somewhat. Sales taxes have been growing at about 3%. We had a little modicum of growth in property, in the property values this year, which of course helped us. Authorized staffing remains at the same level, although we are proposing that there be a general pay plan adjustment now of, I believe, 2.5%. As, as the sheet says, 3%, but it should be 2.5% based on your input from last week. Also, the, the fund balance projected to be carried over is then also $100,000 higher, based on those actions last week. The fee schedule that you have in front of you, there's a general adjustment of approximately 3% on most fees. Some of them are slightly different. If there is a review body that is involved in setting the fees, for example, the BID recommended a 2.5% change, so that is what is in place for those fees. Some of the other advisory boards also have input, and they would also have been changed, perhaps in a slightly different manner. Some fees, when staff looked at them, were out of line with the market in some regard, and so that also has an influence on, on how that is, how those are considered. I would say there is one correction that needs to be made to the fee schedule you were given, and that was sanitation fees in the copy you had were listed at $14.70 per month, and it should be $14.17. And that was simply a, an error in preparation of the schedule, and that is the amount we talked about in the study sessions. And I think at that, I will stand for questions, if you have any at this point.
Go ahead.
No, you're good.
Okay, I have a question that's also related to item 6.4, related to the Police Department fees. Would one time be better to ask about that than another?
The fees that are incorporated into this schedule are those fees that were proposed in, in that ordinance.
So if we vote on this one, then 6.4 is yesterday's news then?
Well, that is a bit problematic.
Well, I'm going to ask now then.
Okay, ask now.
On page 32, you have the list of Police Department fees, and this one may require a little more discussion. I was concerned about the fact that all of these fees are pretty much related to commercial alarm systems, is that correct?
Commercial and residential.
Commercial and residential?
Yes. But fire's separate from police, I mean, that answers your question.
Well, I was, at first I thought it was, the first discussion, I thought you were referring mainly to...
For police, it's all, it's commercial and residential, but the fine, or the, how they're broken out are the same, whether it's a house or a commercial.
Okay. Most of the concerns that you had, I think, were, were, were they with commercial, or were they split between commercial and residential?
It's primarily commercial, but we want to address both at the same time, is why we put them both in there.
The only, only reason I was asking is that the fine schedule is the same, both for residential and commercial.
In some cities, it is, they do differentiate, but as far as some examples I saw, and I looked at a lot of them, some are, they differentiate, some don't. And I just chose not to, I guess I was following the kids' principle. If you send two officers to a residential, it's not much difference than sending two officers to a commercial. That was my theory in that, that's why I came to these amounts.
The only question I have is that, just thinking from a, with a business mind, the fee schedule does not really make me think any more than just ho-hum. $25 for, to, as a fine for a false alarm response, to me, is, you know, that's just a minor irritation.
And I find that interesting, because I recall specifically, this wasn't supposed to be a money grab, so I was trying to be really fair in what my amounts were. And to some people, I don't think $25 does mean, mean much, but it does go up. Each, each time we respond, it goes up. But I saw some that were massively higher. In fact, most of the ones I looked at were higher, cities in Kansas were higher than we were. That is true. We were middle to the bottom as far as the fees. These are actually higher than what I initially proposed, and kind of for that very reason, because of what they used to be, Second Offensive was $35, and that didn't even cover our projected cost to send, to send two police officers.
And what does that cost?
It was $48-ish, is what it was, to send two, you know, it was 40 minute, based on 40 minutes, 40 minute total spend on it. That's how I arrived at that figure. There's, these absolutely could be higher, but again, I thought I was following what folks were asking as far as, didn't look like we were getting ridiculous on our amounts. I think this is enough to deter the person from not getting his alarm fixed, and if not, what's built into this ordinance is we can say, "We're not coming anymore." You're right, at $500, if it gets up to 150 per time we come out there, and that's not deterring you, at some point, I have the authority in the ordinance to say, "We're not coming anymore." But see, what I also think's to happen, that's happened in other cities, they decide they don't need an alarm anymore, because even if it's $25, they get tired of paying $25.50, so they just say, "We'll do, we'll do without an alarm." And in theory, that, we, I don't want to say we won there, but that solved our problem too, is because of these fines, they stopped having an alarm. Do you see what I'm saying there? We can come back if you think these are too low. I can tell you, they're not completely out of line with, with the agencies I looked at, with Wichita, Shawnee, Upland Park, and Olathe, and we were right in the, in the, in the same ballpark. Some of them gave two free ones. I, I was opposed to that, because if you have 2,000 alarms a year, and you're giving everybody two free ones, I mean, in theory, you could have a lot more. So anyway, I went with the one quasi-free one, if you don't get the training to, to get your alarm fixed. So I was even a little bit leaning there. Most places give one or two free responses by the police before they start fining, but I thought two was too much. So on that end, I was less tolerant of responding. The first one's free, only if you attend the, there's some fancy name for it, but it's online video you watch and verify you watched it, and then we waived the first fine.
I was, I was not as interested in making money on this thing as the fine being a deterrent, that people would be more thoughtful about, "Well, we had this alarm, maybe our system and our business is not set up properly so that we know that when we walk out the door, everything is secure, and we're not going to trip it accidentally again."
And I don't know, I mean, to a residential person, $75 a second may be nothing, but, to a commercial, I'm sorry, but to me personally, I wouldn't want to be paying $75 because we came out there, the alarm is false. It would give me an incentive to get the alarm fixed, but you're right, I, I don't know if that's too high or too low. I mean, I take it the commissioner feels too low, and it can be higher. I mean, these, these numbers all came, again, I didn't just make these up. I was looking at all these other places and thought this was pretty close to what you folks were asking me to do, but I can raise them.
I just want it to be at, you were, you were talking about one customer, I think it was, that was having a false alarm every week, or...
But those were the type that we would say, "Get it fixed, or we're not coming," for that.
Okay.
That's the worst, that's the worst of the worst.
Right.
For those few people that don't care, but if they don't care to keep on paying, at some point, I'm going to say, "Even though you're paying, I care, because you're wasting our officer's time, the resource." So those will be the ones that the ordinance addresses, that we can let them know, "We're not coming anymore, unless you get your alarm fixed."
Commissioners, I think, even with all the time that you've spent on it, and staff's spent on it, and we, because of that, we've got it in the public quite a lot, but yet, like anything that we do, we're going to find that even with outreach, you're going to have a lot of folks, commercial and residential, that this is going to be a new thing when they have their first false alarm. My suggestion is, is given that we did look at the, the rates with the other cities, and we're trying to be, we don't know in Salina what is that perfect rate level just yet, but you will know after the first year, and if, if we have, you know, a significant number of folks who just think, just continue to want to pay and, and go up to their third, fourth, fifth, sixth, or what have you, that probably means that we need to raise the, the fee for it.
I think this is pretty fair, and I think, as I recall our conversation, it was to be sort of an educational tool, to get them involved in taking care of their alarm if it's going off without them, you know, without knowing it.
If there's a way we could not fine them a penny, and then we add compliance, we would do that, but obviously that doesn't, you know, that doesn't work, unfortunately.
Well, right, and I think, I think all along, I think what everybody's saying, the goal is compliance and not a source of revenue, so.
Speaking for the people in my block, these, these rates are, are fine. If Commissioner Hardy wants to pay more, we should not...
And I would say for the commercial. I think the residential side was fine, it was, it was the commercial side that I was wondering about.
For the commercial side, I think, just the, having to respond to the complaint, and spend the time it takes to write the check, and all the rest of that, going to get, be far more outweighed any other monetary penalty, penalty you could give them, because they aren't going to want to take time out of their day to fiddle around with that, this kind of a nuisance. They don't want to get it fixed.
Your nuisance factor on that.
I, I agree, there are more commercial alarms, but it doesn't cost us anymore to respond to commercial alarms, but there are more. But, so we could have, like I said, some, some cities do make it higher, but I was trying to, I didn't want to have two pages of separated fines based on whatever, so I tried to keep it a little bit simpler. That was my, what my thinking was.
No, I, I think that, yeah, the fines on the, on the residential side will be, you know, that people will look at that and say, "Man, I really am going to pay extra attention when I walk out the door now."
They, they are higher, as you can see, but not much higher, the, the commercial side, because most of your robberies, false alarm are coming from, the robberies are coming from commercial, obviously. They're a little bit higher, but they're not much higher.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Hardy's original question, would it be appropriate at the end of the second part of the public hearing to approve the fees first, and then come back and adopt the budget?
If you, yeah, if you think you want to speak more of the fees, if you're pretty comfortable with what the fee schedule is, and these fees, I'd go ahead and just take action on the item. But if you do, if you're not comfortable, and you wish to speak later, I'd postpone, or I would postpone, I'd table this item till later in the meeting, and then move on, and then come back to it after you hit the, the item, the agenda item that deals specifically with the alarms.
Okay. Well, we, we only date stamp these, we don't timestamp them, correct? We take, take action all in the same day, I think we're okay. Of course, unless anybody thinks it's going to change. Any further questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I'll point out, one of the things, for those who are interested, the, the cost of moving a house has not changed, so that fee did not increase this year, so anybody needs to move their house. Okay, we have public comment at this time, this is, we haven't received any on the ordinance, we did not receive any public comment or concerns at this time, but we'll take public comment now.
Judy Larson, 7:15, North 9th. I just had a question. Wouldn't, don't these commercial entities have some kind of insurance policy that would be affected if their alarm was broken, and they didn't fix it? Wouldn't their premiums go up, or wouldn't there be kind of, wouldn't they have that kind of a problem that they would need to address? Which would be more incentive to get the alarm fixed?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the answer to that, from the chief, was yes, and I think that, that probably is even beyond the scope of what we're, what we're able to influence here, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and any, any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back for action. I'll just ask for a procedural question here. Do we want to pass the resolution first, and then the second, the fee schedule, and then, and then the entire?
I don't, I don't think, even if you made a slight change in the fee schedule, that it would affect your budget, so.
Okay.
I think you're prob, if you're comfortable with the budget piece, go ahead and approve that, and then you could go to the fee schedule, or move it further in the meeting by tabling it.
Will, okay. Got clarification? Good? Okay. Okay, not everybody at once.
Waiting for your permission. Mr. Mayor, I move adoption on second reading, Ordinance Number 15-10792, Adopting the 2016 Budget.
Second.
Okay. Motion to second to adopt on second reading, Ordinance Number 15-10792. Any further discussion?
Well, I did want to just say that I thought this commission worked very well together on the budget. The last few years have been really tough on budgeting, but this year's budget does show that we did not raise the property taxes. We funded the fifth route for the bus system to get people back and forth to work. We did give city employees a well-deserved increase, since they hadn't had an increase since 2008, and we kept our service level to the public responsible, so I think there's a big thanks owed to the city sta, excuse me, city staff, and city manager, and deputy city manager.
Here, here.
I, I concur with the Vice Mayor, very well said, and also thank staff and fellow commissioners for work on this budget process. Okay, so we'll get a roll, roll call on this second reading.
Commissioner Crawford.
Yay.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye. Passes five, zero. And if anybody wishes to take action on the comprehensive fee schedule, we'll go ahead and do that at this time.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number 15-7272, Establishing Fees for Services in the Comprehensive Fee Schedule.
Second.
Gave a motion to second to approve Resolution Number 15-7272. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five, zero.
Commissioners, just a note, typically at this time, we'll usually have a pay plan, if there are any changes in front of you. We don't at this time, simply because we're still looking at modifications before we bring it to you, but we have our budget in place, we know what our dollar amounts are, and whatever we bring in front of you will certainly match up with that, so just to kind of let you know on the logistics.
Okay. Appreciate the update. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of August 10th, 2015. Item 6.2, Award Contract for the 2015 Structure Demolition, Project Number DS-15-0001, and Project Number 15-0003, to Exel Dirt and Excavating in the Amount of $64,600, representing $40,700 for Project Number 15-0001, and $23,900 for Project Number 15-0003. Item 6.3, Approve Resolution Number 15-7270, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a License Agreement with Payne Oil Company Incorporated, to Allow the Proposed Onings and Signage for Payne Oil Company Inc. to Extend Over the Public Sidewalk in Front of the Building at 510 to 514 East Iron Avenue. Item 6.4, Approve Resolution Number 15-7271, Establishing Fees and the Comprehensive Fee Schedule Related to the False Alarm Ordinance. Item 6.5, Approve Resolution Number 15-7273, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Alarm Administrator Contract with PMAM Corporation, for the Purpose of Serving as the City's Alarm Administrator pursuant to Article 3, Chapter 30 of this Salina Code, in Compliance with Federal, State, and Local Regulations.
Okay, are there any items on the consent agenda a commissioner would like to remove or have amended at this time? I would like to take 6.5 off and, and just get a, since we haven't had an opportunity to read through that, just to get a, an update on what that is, and take action at that time. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item 6.5.
I would have moved, I would move that we approve consent agenda as presented, minus item 6.5.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda, minus item 6.5. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes five, zero, and, and just, this just needs to go as quick as, quick as you might, might want to make that, and it would be Chief Nelson, and the reason is just that we just received this packet today, so just, we haven't had time to read it, so if you just give us a quick summary, we'll listen to what you have to say, and probably be semi-distracted by reading some of it ourselves. But, if you would, sir.
We're discussing the contract itself.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the, the contract with PMAM Corporation, so...
Yes, certainly read the contract many times, Mr. Martin. Fascinating reading. Basically, it's a standard contract, it was put into our template, as far as the contract itself, but the, the actual, the initial lesson base of the contract came from the PMAM Corporation, and then Mr. Martin spent countless hours putting it into our template. As far as specific, anything in there, I would obviously like him to address it, but it is a standard contract, it's, they have a program, software they bring in, plug everything in, come and train our people, it's not train one person, our alarm administrator, who's basically responsible for it at our end here. It's a software used throughout the nation, I mean, it's not, we're not the initial one ever to use it, it's been used throughout the nation. I did call around a few places about the, the actual contract and the program, pretty much got rave reviews. Now, the, the amount, the dollar amount, the percentages, that differs by department, by city, I'm sorry, differs by city, it's based on how many alarms you get per year. On the average, you provide them five years of data, what's your percentage of false alarms are, and then what you're proposing, the fee schedule, they, they have to know that, that's how they came up with that percentage. So they didn't, it's, it's a lot of number crunching to get that percentage, and I called around, and somewhere as high as 40-some percent their take, but that's because they were getting more than, you know, two or three false alarms where there's no fee assessed to it. So there's a lot of variables as far as how they came up with that percent, just so you know, but it was considerably less, I didn't tell them that, but it was less than what I thought it was going to be, for their, I hate to say their take, but their share.
Okay. And then you spoke earlier of the option, or the, the grace call, so to speak, if they had gone through and read something and checked off, is this administered by this company? Is that all part of this?
I'm not exactly sure, I'm not sure what you're speaking of.
Well, when we, the first, sort of the first forgiveness, like the first false alarm or whatever, can you mention something about they, if they go on?
That's part of, that's part of the program, yes, I didn't mean to interrupt. That's absolutely part of it. They, they go, and they administer that part, as far as you go online, and you're able to register that you looked at this alarm, and then our alarm administrator here, locally, will waive that first alarm fee, and they won't get a bill, they won't get a fee bill.
If there's a fine, does that fine get written to PMAM Corporation, and then we get something back, or does it come to us, and then, how, how does that, how do the fines and the collection of the fines?
I don't want to speak out of turn here.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The way the contract is set up, the alarm administrator will handle all fees and fine assessments, so as an alarm user, when the Police Department reports that a false alarm occurred, then PMAM, as the outsourced alarm administrator, they will send the invoice to the alarm user, the alarm user will cut a check, or pay it via some other method online. The alarm administrator will collect those funds, and then monthly remit the city's share back to the city.
It's tied into RMS, it's not something that's exactly how many alarms we, they mesh together, tells how many alarms we went to, there's entries on whether that was a false alarm or an actual alarm, but that's how it's all done.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering how logistically it works, if all of a sudden somebody gets a bill in the mail from PMAM, and they're saying, "What in the world, who are these guys?"
Right. And we're going to do everything we can to educate the public as far as what's coming, and we've already tried to start doing that, but, but I couldn't get too far ahead of myself till this actually is done, I mean, till we actually have a contract in hand, and the fee schedule is done, but once that is approved, or, you know, when it happens, that's when we're really going to start hitting it. But that's also why we gave such a lag time of November 1st, it's not even taking effect till November 1st. So that whole time will be spent on educating the public about what this is.
Okay.
One question, if I could, if I didn't forget it, I know what it was. If there's a dispute over whether or not it was a false alarm, is that handled with the Police Department here, or with...
It's internally, it's there, it's written, it's either me, or who I designate for that purpose.
But now, but does that slow down, if a person has filed a dispute, does it slow down the...
But now, does that slow down, if a person has filed a dispute, does it slow down the timeframe for PNAM to collect the money? Do they wait for the, this mechanism for their dispute to be resolved before they get that second bill?
Yes. And we have the final say. It's not this corporation out somewhere making that, making that decision for us locally. I have that final say on whether or not, and I have quite a bit of leeway. I mean, literally, if there's a power outage and it's built into four, how many hours? So many hours. I have the ability to say if half the city lost their power, we're not going to be fined any for false alarms. But on the same note, we're not going to be responding because we don't have that many cops, so we couldn't anyway. But it, you know, it's still, it'll still be in our RMS system as an alarm call, but it also could be one of forty for that night, where we can just wipe it clean because those were because of an act of God, or, you know, that's, that's why we do that.
Yeah, that makes, that makes me feel better, too, that you, you're the one that's going to...
So that, that company would not begin to bill someone until the police department has certified that it was a false?
We would have to notify them of that. And I'm somewhat used to that, because where I came from, I was the alarm administrator, so I do know how to do that as far as, they don't just know that there's a storm in the state of Kansas, but we would tell them what occurred, and on this date and time between these hours, don't count that as billable alarm response.
But if it's a legit false alarm, do they wait until they get notification from your department that indeed this was a false alarm?
I think I know what you're asking. Yeah, they, they would...
Just as far as the checks and balances?
Yes. And the folks that are getting a bill, for lack of a better term, they still got the bill generated. They still receive the bill, but that's at the point where they can grieve or come see me whether or not they want to actually pay that bill because, because of whatever happened.
But you would know how many false alarms they should be billing before they bill?
Uh...
Just what, what's the check on how many?
Well, because they're all the information, if you're wondering how they got that information, it's all coming out of our RMS system. So the same report they get on the number of alarms we had in one, any given month, we would get the exact same report.
So you would know how many folks you should have received payment from?
Oh, sure. Because we're operating off the same report, and we're operating off our RMS system. So it, yeah, I understand where you're going there, but yeah. And we definitely keep up on that. That's good.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I have one, one more question.
Okay.
I believe it said that the, this, this company would be using an independent third party if there was non-payment of the, the fines, or whatever you want to call them.
I don't know if I recall it.
Collections?
Collections, yeah.
To my knowledge, there's not a collection agency per se. Is that correct?
That's correct. PMAM provides the initial notice to alarm users, but if the alarm user does not pay it, they do not act as a debt collection service. That would be a separate contract the city would procure with. I'm not sure if PMAM does that. Their, this contract definitely does not require that, and I believe we'd be looking at a different outfit to provide that service.
If I can add to that, there's also two avenues to encourage people to, to pay also, and that's by not responding. And it's also built into the, you can go to municipal court and explain why you're not, why your alarm system's still faulty and why you have outstanding debt.
So there's, there's two avenues already, short of a collection agency. But this company is not going to go out and knock on doors saying, yo, it's lined at twenty dollars or whatever.
Yeah. I guess I'm just feeling a little bit uneasy about having a third-party collection agency calling citizens, asking for unpaid amounts, rather than unpaid amounts that are due to city services being paid for through other avenues.
That's correct. So, so PMAM is not providing that service?
Right.
And, and to my knowledge, we don't have that service lined up via another entity.
Your concern is that we were doing that?
Well, I thought I saw somewhere in this, just looking at this briefly, it said, the services provided, this is on page eight dash three, do not extend to any debt collection activities in the event of the property owner not, does not pay any amount. Any such debt collection activities shall be performed by an independent contractor selected either by the contractor with the prior written consent of the city or its designee, or the city or its designee or agent upon written notice to the contractor. So that means they could contract with another party, some debt collection entity.
Yes, it anticipates that if we wanted to, we could coordinate with them, and they could hire their preferred outfit to do that, with the prior written consent of, of the city.
If these are unpaid, or are these treated as unpaid traffic tickets or parking tickets and end up in municipal court?
They could be. The, the, the false alarm ordinance says that if a false alarm fee is not paid, then it can be, it can be prosecuted in municipal court for violation of the ordinance.
To be clear, Commissioner Hardy, at this point, there's been no discretion of having a third-party collection agency. There's no talk of that. And if I, if I understand what this says, we would have to agree to do that before they do it. They just want to do it on their own.
Okay.
And there's been no, in my opinion, there's no intention to do that at this point.
I would, I would think that having municipal court as a hammer would get people's attention, too.
Just as a clarification, if I understand correctly, though, non-payment would not be treated immediately as an unpaid ticket. It would be the basis for citation into municipal court, correct?
That's correct. It would, it would require some additional action of the issuance of a notice to appear in municipal court. It wouldn't automatically happen.
And is there any minimum amount that's due this company per month? Assuming everyone's alarm in town works perfectly well the whole year, they're just flat out of luck?
No, there's no, there's no fees at all, other than what's collected via the fees. There's nothing owed. They bring everything in, they say everything up, they train. That's how, how it operates.
What's the duration of this contract?
Three years.
Three years, okay. And then renewable? Is there a renewable clause in here or anything?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, I, I don't, well, I say that, I think it is, it has, it has automatic one-year renewals unless either party provides written notice of its intent to terminate after three years. So the initial term is three years.
Okay. All right, great. Any further questions for staff? And thank you. Okay, bring it back for action.
I move we approve resolution fifteen dash seventy-two seventy-three, authorizing the city manager to execute an alarm administrator contract with PM AM Corporation for the purpose of serving as a city's alarm administrator pursuant to Article three, Chapter thirty of this line of code and compliance with federal, state, and local regulations.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve resolution number fifteen dash seven two seven three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five, zero. That does it for the consent agenda. We'll move to administration.
Item seven point one, second reading, oh, sorry, resolution number one five dash seven two seven four, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with SB Friedman and Company for New Markets Tax Credit Consulting Services on a contingent fee basis.
Okay, this will be Mike Skreg with the staff report.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. The Field House project is an exciting public-private partnership that you've been working on for quite some time now. And you've taken a number of actions, and I just want to be clear at the outset, the item before you today is very limited in that it is in agreement with SB Friedman and Company out of Chicago to provide consulting services intended to market our project and see if it's possible to secure New Markets tax credits that could have a positive financial benefit to the project. You may have recognized the background, a good portion of the background that I provided is having been cut and paced from a previous staff report from the Parks Department, and that is definitely the case. I won't go over that. The reason I included it is just for the benefit of a reader. Somewhere out in the future, they pick this document up, they have a full sense of the project. But I think the things that are of interest for you today, number one, I should disclose, I did change a characterization in the Parks Department report to note that the Phoenix had been a blight on our downtown. That, those are my words, not the Parks directors', but I think most people would agree with that characterization. As a little bit of a summary, on October twenty-seventh of last year, you passed a resolution indicating your support for the public-private partnership for the Field House. And at that time, there was discussion about a nine million dollar budget and a fifty-fifty split of that cost, four hundred, four and a half million to be raised by private donors or through private donors, and the other four and a half to be pledged by the City of Salina. The community group that was seeking those pledges recently agreed to release six hundred thousand dollars of private donor funds to us for the purposes of covering expenses for design related to construction drawings, construction manager-at-risk expenses, and owners' representative expenses estimated to, to cover the first five months. And so that has, that is underway. On June fourth of 2015, staff issued a request for qualifications for design firms. And on July thirteenth of this year, you authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with Shawna C. Fickle and Scott Architects for Architectural and Engineering Services and Frue Development Group for Owners Representative Services. And then RFQs for the construction manager-at-risk provider are out and being processed as we speak, and we anticipate that they could be before you for your consideration at your August twenty-fourth meeting. So as a little bit of background, the project's underway, design, and designer's been selected, owners' representative has been selected, and we're in, in the tail end of the construction manager-at-risk selection process. As part of the private donors fundraising efforts, Pat Beatty, among others, pointed out that, that New Markets tax credits might be an opportunity that they might want to pursue to help them reach their four and a half million dollar goal. And I think, as you know, on, on July twentieth, Brian Richardson addressed you and, and was able to report that they had raised the four, four and a half, four and a half million dollars of their goal with private donations without the need for New Market tax credits. So at this point, New Markets tax credits represent a possible opportunity for additional funds to either decrease the, the financial commitment or cover cost overruns or increase the, the scope of the project. With respect to New Markets tax credits, I, to my personal knowledge, I think I'm the first one to quote Wikipedia in a staff report, but I found that to be a pretty concise and useful description of New Market tax credits. And so I hate to read to you, but it's pretty concise. It explains that it was a program established in two thousand par, two thousand as part of the Community Renewal Tax Relief Act of two thousand. The goal of the program is to spur revitalization efforts of low-income and impoverished communities across the United States. The program provides tax credit incentives to investors for equity investments in certified development entities which invest in low-income communities. The credit equals thirty-nine percent of the investment paid by the CDE, and it's paid out over seven years. And a community development entity must have a primary mission of investing in low-income communities and persons. And so with the help of, of Pat Beatty and SB Friedman and some others, we were able to confirm that the census tract on which the Field House is proposed to be built meets the eligibility requirements. And you may have noticed, if you read closely the agreement with SB Friedman, they described our project as being eligible on the basis that it is a high-impact community facility that is anticipated to be catalytic to the surrounding area, highly supported by local government and community organizations, and will deliver much-needed services to an underserved area. That is their description. That's the basis under which they're willing to take this project on, on a contingent basis. So not too long ago, the private donors issued a request for qualifications and conducted interviews of consultants that specialize in New Markets tax credits, and they identified SB Friedman as the most qualified respondent. Due to the nature of the project, as well as some discussions that we've had about how we would like to manage the project on the city end, it's, if we were to proceed with a consultant for New Markets tax credits, it would be necessary to, for the city to enter directly into an agreement with them. And so the private donors made a handoff to the city in terms of, here's what we've done, here's, here's who we would recommend, and they'd actually had some conversations with them about how they would approach it on a contingent basis. Recognizing that, that we weren't involved with that on the front end and, and needing to be objective, staff identified the need to bring in outside objective counsel. We initially turned to our bond counsel that we use extensively, and they're rarely knowledgeable on a number of projects, but they acknowledged New Markets tax credits are complex, not something that they do on a regular basis. And with the assistance of both our bond counsel and our bond underwriters, we identified Paul O'Hanlon with the Leverage Group as a, as an outside objective source that we could rely on to do some initial assessment of New Markets tax credits and how they might apply to our project. So with the assistance of Mr. Hanlon and his acknowledgement that SB Friedman is a, is a reputable company that he could recommend, we started doing financial analysis on a worst-case basis. By that, I mean, we wanted to be sure that we had accounted for, we weren't overly optimistic, we'd accounted for a realistic assessment of what New Market tax credits might be able to render for the city. And I would note, one of the key differences is the City of Salina is tax-exempt from a sales tax and property tax basis, where most private sector, most New Markets tax credit projects are private sector projects that see those as just expenses towards their bottom line. So when we factored in the possibility of sales tax and property tax, that really became the focus of the worst-case scenario, financial projections. We since had some conversations with our bond counsel and our underwriters and Paul O'Hanlon, who then consulted with Tony Smith with SB Friedman, and we are comfortable that we've found an approach that would incorporate industrial revenue bonds in a way that's eligible on, on the state basis, and would make the project a hundred percent sales tax exempt and seventy to a hundred percent property tax exempt. The reason for the range there is the property tax exemption is a ratio of the funds put into the project compared to the assessed value. And so it would look at the funds from the city, and the, and the donors' funds would count as city funds for that purpose, compared to the assessed value of the project when it's complete. So assuming that we put in nine million dollars to a ten million dollar project, if it assessed at nine million dollars, that'd be a hundred percent property tax exemption. So the, our bond counsel, when I asked them their level of confidence that IRBs could be used, indicated it was ninety-nine point nine percent. They were comfortable that the IRB format could be used. The only question left was the seventy to a hundred percent property tax exemption. So from a worst-case scenario, that helped shore up that bottom line quite a bit. So that, that sales tax exemption, and that's estimated on my part, represents about four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and the seventy percent property tax exemption represents about nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars improvement in that bottom line calculation. The reimbursable fee, or the fee that, that SB Friedman would collect is what they call a success fee, and it's one point five percent of the qualified equity investment, which I'll show you a diagram in a little bit, and it'll kind of show where those numbers come from. But it is fully contingent on their part. It's dependent on closing on a New Market transaction and distribution of funds to the city. The only part that isn't contingent is the reimbursable expenses, which they agreed to cap at two hundred and fifty dollars. I, I had to clarify with them, we weren't talking in factors of tens or thousands. It was two hundred and fifty, and they indicated that it was. If there are expenses above that, it would require the consent of the city before they're incurred. So SB, with the timing becomes the next question or, or point of discussion, and that is SB Freeman would begin marketing our project immediately, and they would try to market it to CDEs that have already received a 2015 allocation. If they're successful, then that would dovetail very well into our timeline of construction possibly beginning in the spring. If they aren't, it would be necessary to look at a 2016 schedule in terms of New Markets tax credits allocations. If that were the case, that timeline slows down a little bit. The expectation would be that we would have worked up a relationship with one or possibly multiple CDEs that would include our project specifically in their applications. And then when they receive notification that they were awarded 2016 allocations, likely in the second quarter of 2016, we would already be on their radar, and we would know where we stand, and we could get the, the paperwork going to close in the third or fourth quarter of 2016. The contingent nature of the agreement helps a lot in terms of being able to play this out without additional expense to the city and see what our options are, whether we can find a CDE that has a 2015 allocation, or whether the numbers start to look, how the numbers start to shape up with CDEs, and, and what we want to do with the 2016 timeline, or whether we want to pursue a 2016 timeline. So I also noted in my report that there is a provision for a twenty-four-month look-back period. In the event that a New Market tax credit deal is, is struck and, and credits are awarded, expenses incurred the twenty-four months prior are eligible expenses towards the New Market tax credit project. But I have to include a caveat that, obviously, we don't want to spend funds hoping that New Market tax credits come in, and, and they don't. We're going to have to be very strategic in our analysis and our timing, and I don't expect that we would be able to expand the scope of the project counting on New Market tax credits until we knew exactly what the status of those might be. The other thing that I should tell you is there, we will have some expenses as it relates to bond counsel consulting, and we, I expect that we will... to bond counsel consulting, and I expect that we will continue to use Paul O'Handlon for outside consulting. So while everything is contingent with S.B. Friedman, there are hourly fees that we would incur for advice that we might seek from those two councils. However, I think we're to a point where we could turn this project over to S.B. Friedman, let them market it, and they would have quite a bit of work to do before they'd have something to bring back to us for consideration that would require additional consulting by our bond counsel or by Paul O'Handlon. So I think with a strategic approach, we could make a go-no-go decision out in the future. This would be an opportunity to engage S.B. Friedman, test the market in terms of New Markets Tax Credits, and there is significant financial upside if we were successful in getting a New Markets Tax Credit deal. So with that, I've got a fairly detailed diagram that is my best effort to graphically represent how this would play out and show the worst-case bottom line net cost-benefit calculation that I've prepared. Is the projector still awake, Gary?
Yes.
Okay. There we go. So what I'm going to show you is an Excel workbook that's intended to diagram what would likely be this line of New Markets Tax Credit approach that would be taken. It's based on S.B. Friedman's feedback and their model, and it's also based on a $9 million project assumption. Depending on how this New Markets Tax Credits played out, there's the opportunity to generate additional funds and pursue a project that would exceed the $9 million amount, but this is calculated on a $9 million basis. So we start with the City of Salina and our role and the private donors. In this particular case, I'm showing basically $3.5 million being contributed by the private donors. They've raised the four and a half, but if New Market Tax Credits come into play, the full four and a half might not be necessary for a $9 million project. I've got, I showed the city at the same amount, it's possible to change that distribution, that's something that could be addressed in the future. So when you combine those two funds, that's $7 million that's made available for the project and is the starting point of the New Markets Tax Credit deal. Those funds are then contributed or distributed to a leveraged lender, which is a 509A3 corporation, which is a very specific tax classification that is an entity that aids the city in its purposes. And as a note, the city appoints the majority, if not all, of those members, and there's going to be another 509A3 in the diagram later, that there is some consideration or requirement that one independent director have, possibly have enhanced voting rights. But the point is, these structures are required through the New Markets Tax Credit Program to be eligible. They are, much like an appointed body that we would create, but they are independent enough for tax purposes to get the New Markets Tax Credits. So the leveraged lender then makes a leveraged loan that is in the amount of the funds provided by the city and the private donors, and that goes into the investment fund, which is the qualified equity investment, and that becomes the focus of the tax credit calculations. In this particular model, the total qualified equity investment was calculated first, and then everything was calculated backwards from that. And so the qualified equity investment shown here is a combination of the leveraged loan that I discussed, the tax equity that would be generated by the New Markets Tax Credit Program, as well as eligible fees that can be funded with the New Markets Tax Credits, which I'll itemize in a little bit. So at the point that you know your qualified equity amount, then the tax credit award by the program is 39% of that amount. So 39% of $10 million is 3.9 million, and those tax credits are sold to a New Market Tax Credit Investor, and that is essentially a market that they go out to market and sell, and the value of those tax credits can fluctuate some, but S.B. Friedman felt like 84 cents on the dollar was a representative amount that they've seen. In fact, they've seen sales at 88 cents on the dollar, and they recommended, assuming 84. So if you sell 3.9 million dollars worth of tax credits at 84 cents on the dollar, you generate approximately $3.3 million of tax credit equity. Those are the new funds injected from the federal program into the project. So when you put the $7 million of leveraged loan with the 3.9 of the New Market Tax Credit equity, that adds up to more than the $10 million you see there as a qualified equity investment. And in part, that's because there's a deduction for the CDE at that point. They deduct 2.5% as their fee. So that all, the qualified equity investment is run through the community development entity, and they make two loans. One is Loan A, the value of the funds contributed by the city and the donors; the other is Loan B, the value of the New Market Tax Credit Equity, and that goes into the second qualified, the second 509A3, which is a qualified active low-income community business per the New Market Tax Credit requirements and affectionately referred to as a Qualic B. I'm starting to pick up this terminology, I've worked with it enough. So that all then flows to the project fund. So you start with 9.7 or almost 9.8 million dollars of funds in the project fund. There's an equity capitalization on part of the Qualic B, so they hold back some of those funds, and they're a transaction cost of about a million. So when I said the calculation's done backwards, that all nets out to the $9 million target that was identified as the project target in the first place. There are no longer any net sales tax to apply, so there's $9 million available for a project budget. On an annual basis, for the first seven years, lease payments are made back to the Qualic B, since they would technically be the owner of the fieldhouse, and the city would be leasing on a triple-net lease the facility from the Qualic B and operating it as if it were a city facility. So those are interest-only payments at a rate of 1%, so the payment on Loan A is $70,000, and the payment on Loan B is $30,000. And those all flow back through the structure to the Qualic B, to the community development entity, to the leveraged lender. Previously, in talking with Paul O'Handlon, there was some thought that a portion of those loan payments would flow back to the New Market Tax Credit Investor, but S.B. Friedman's indicated that that's not necessary. And so ultimately, those all flow back to the city. The payments do have to be made on an annual basis, but they net zero to the city by the time that they get distributed back. So when we look at the anticipated revenues and expenses of the project, there's also a return of the Qualic B reserve at about $100,000, and that represents income. There's, the 30% of property taxes estimated at almost $400,000. There is also a provision for a fair-market value purchase of the value of the loan that's outstanding in year eight, and that depends on the loan amount, so it fluctuates, but based on this model, that would be about $660,000. We've had quite a few conversations with multiple people that that is a required element of the program, but the New Market Tax Credit Investor has the option of selling that loan for what they call a $1,000 put, or selling it for the fair-market value of the loan. The market is such that New Market Tax Credit Investors that do this on a regular basis are in it for the equity they're getting on buying tax credits for cents on the dollar, and they recognize that they are expected to sell the loan at a $1,000 value at the end, and if they fail to do that, they'll no longer be in the New Market Tax Credit market as an investor that people will want to sell to. However, that is not able to be codified in a formal agreement on the front end, which is why it's shown as an expense in these assumptions. So this truly is a worst-case scenario, that there's only 70% property tax exemption, and that the full fair-market value purchase of the loan has to be made. Those two items at a future date could also turn out to be favorable to the city, and they're worth approximately a million dollars between the two of them. There's also an indemnification requirement that the New Market Tax Credit Investor would have to be indemnified. The typical way that that is done is to pledge the real estate against, as the indemnity, if anything should happen, they potentially get titled to the real estate. It's shown there as a dollar, just to recognize that that is a required element of the transaction. Obviously, it's going to be incumbent on the city and our advisors to make sure that this deal is done correctly so that there's no indemnification necessary when it actually is consummated. So those anticipated revenues and expenses net out at approximately a million-dollar expense. So when you make a comparison, the donors have put in a million dollars less than the four and a half million originally pledged. The city's put in a million dollars less than originally pledged. There is expenses of a million, so when you net all that out, that represents a positive to the city of a million dollars, if the New Market Tax Credit transaction occurred at a $9 million amount, as described and compliant with New Market Tax Credit requirements. I've also done a best-case scenario calculation, and if all the funds were put into the project, it could generate about a $10.5 million project with another $700,000 of fair-market value equity possibly to be had at the end of the transaction. But I guess the point is, at this point, Paul O'Handlon, S.B. Friedman all agree that if a New Market Tax Credit deal can be structured, the downside is still positive, there's not a negative worst-case scenario bottom line, and it really depends on the ability to market the project and get a community development entity and an investor interested. So that's a lot of detail as it relates to the mechanics of a New Market Tax Credit transaction. With respect to the conformance of the strategic plan, we talk about being thriving economically and socially, the city being inviting, improving the quality of life for residents and visitors, having high-quality services, and having the downtown be a thriving and vibrant place. I think this contributes to all of those items. With respect to the fiscal note, I've touched on the contingency, contingent nature of this agreement, but the success fee is equal to 1.5% of the New Market Tax Credit allocation, and it's only due and payable in the event of a transaction closing. In a $9 million scenario, that fee would be $150,666. The only other provision for expenses in this agreement are the reimbursables of $250 that I mentioned. The agreement also provides two scenarios under which the city can terminate the agreement. One is for cause, the other is for convenience, and the termination for convenience has a caveat that we have, there's a provision in there for an exclusivity period. The City of Salina agrees to exclusively use S.B. Friedman as its consultants for three years. So the other exposure that exists is if we were to terminate the agreement with S.B. Friedman and then continue with a New Market Tax Credit deal on our own, with a CDE, with another advisor, and we're successful, S.B. Friedman would still be owed their 1.5% success fee. Frankly, staff's talked about it, and it seems that we're either going to be able to get something done with S.B. Friedman, or it's going to be time to move on in terms of the project timeline. So we didn't see that as a risk in terms of owing them a success fee because we've found someone else to do the deal with. So the items, the actions that we've identified for your consideration are that you could approve Resolution Number 157274, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with S.B. Friedman for New Markets Tax Credit Consulting Services on a contingent fee basis. You could postpone the resolution to a specific date to allow staff to gather additional information for your consideration. You could propose amendments to the resolution and/or the agreement for consulting services that we would then need to negotiate with S.B. Friedman and bring back to you for consideration. Or you could choose to fail to approve the resolution, effectively discontinuing our pursuit of New Market Tax Credits. Staff recommends option number one, and I do want to acknowledge that Pat Beatty is here. He has some more direct experience with New Market Tax Credits, he's very involved with the private donors group, and I don't know if it was exclusively his brainchild to look at New Market Tax Credits, but he certainly pointed it out to us for consideration. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer your questions.
Okay, questions for staff?
I think in the past couple of weeks, you've done an excellent job in educating us and simplifying what is truly an involved process. Hats off to you.
Thank you.
All the graphics up on the screen, just addressing the annual cost, you have down there the very, the very last blue box on the right, the years 1 through 7, the nine, is that, are you basing those? I guess looking at the duration of what the, what the seven years is, because we'd always thought it was seven years, but it's actually six years and one day.
Correct.
So can you clear that up as far as?
Well, the seven-year reference is from the New Markets Tax Credit requirements, and there are seven annual payments required. So you've got years 1 through 6, and the first day of year 7 would be that last payment, and that then would be when the deal could unwind, and we could make the decision, the New Market Tax Credit Investor would make the decision on the fair-market value purchase of the loan, and title could transfer back to the city. So when you, in the most easy sense, it's referred to as seven years, but you only have to be one day into that seventh year.
Right, so payment-wise, it's seven payments, but
Right.
the ownership could transfer after six years.
Yes. That's, that's what I've read, all the conversation we've had with both consultants has been focused on the seven years.
Is that, what would be the buyback date?
Well, I believe it would be day one or two of year 7.
Okay.
Commissioners, one other aspect I think that would be good to make sure that you understand, and Mike mentioned Paul O'Handlon with Leverage Group, who is especially a legal advisor with regards to New Markets Tax Credits, and also our bond counsel, Gilmore &amp; Bell, because we're issuing bonds, therefore, they need to ensure that the bonds meet all the federal laws and so forth, state laws and all of that. To date, we've used both of those entities to help get to this point, on a very limited basis to get to this point, but if we get to the point that the S.B. Friedman actually finds a CDE with the 2015 year tax credits, we can latch on to and then form an arrangement, at that point in time, we would use those two entities, Gilmore &amp; Bell and Leverage Group, much more significantly, but their cost in that case, as long as the process goes through and we have a formal deal at the end, once we begin that process, would be wrapped into basically the schematic that you see there, and then paid through that. If by chance that we would enter and get to that phase, but then we wouldn't make it to the end, we would have to pay those fees. Those fees at this point are based on the hours that they need to put in, and the objective would be that, again, they wouldn't put in hours until we found a CDE with the tax credits we could latch on to. So we feel pretty comfortable that at that point, we're headed, we've got someone, we found the CDEs, they want to have a project in Salina, and we have that arrangement, and then it should be finishing out the process. So in essence, we're not putting out a tremendous amount of those consulting legal fees early before we would even know if we have a chance of getting New Markets Tax Credits. But I think it's important for you to understand what their roles may be if we get far enough that we've actually got a deal we're trying to form, and that they won't really have a role until we know that.
Far as allocation goes, 2015 allocations, do we have a date where we would know? If we don't have it by this date, then we know we're not getting a 2015 allocation?
The allocations have been made to the CDEs, and Tony Smith with S.B. Friedman has said that he's been working with Pat to get a sense of the project and market it early, but I think it would really be their call to say, we hit up everyone that we can find, and they already allocated their credits, and we're focusing on next year. But they did say that, you know, we're going to have to make that decision pretty quickly and start getting into discussions about next year's allocation in the next few weeks. So I think we would know something pretty soon.
What would be the earliest date for 2016 allocation notice?
S.B. Friedman indicated the second quarter of 2016. However, the 2015 allocations were slow in being made, and so rather than the second quarter, I think they were the third, nearing the third quarter.
Okay, how would that, how would that, I mean, we're looking at two scenarios. Of course, this scenario here has, looking at a $9 million project. If we were to go the full, let's make the assumption that there are, we get a budget for the actual construction, and it's 11 million. I assume that if we went for our full, I mean, what's nice about this scenario is we're lower than our commitment
Right.
both groups, it's a win-win there. What, how does the timing work between when we know how much this is likely going to cost us, and what the timing is for, if $20,000, $15,000 are available, what, when do we need to let them know maybe what the, what that number would be? I mean, is that our call, or is that their call?
I think it's a conversation, that we, an ongoing conversation we would need to have, because there's a number of ways it could be addressed. If things are looking promising, we pursue this, what the structure of a deal with a CDE might look like, if it's looking If it's looking, if we're looking at 2016, we could say, all right, we need to come up with a couple of different options. A nine million dollar project that we can take advantage of the million, or add alternates that could be elected at the point that we know more. And we're going to have to be a little light on our feet if the timeline starts to slip so that we can be strategic, come back to you and say, you know, we can stay on timeline, but here's what that means. Or if we want to wait for New Market Tax Credits, here's the upside, but here's what it means for the timeline.
Okay, so is the, is the front-end work that SB Friedman? That they would be doing, working on for, for the marketing, would that, would that kind of fall into that realm? Would it be that they'd be working with, trying to get all the front-end work done with the CDE so that when those allocations are made, we're
Yes.
ready to pull the trigger?
Yes, in fact, if, if it's a 2016 allocation, rather than just waiting for an applicant to get allocated and then reach an agreement with them, their hope would be that they've marketed this project such that we are an identified project in their 2016 application. And when the, when they receive the allocation, then we're ready to hit the ground running in terms of closing on the, the transaction.
And how, logistically, what are we looking at time-wise for, once we know the allocation is there, for saying, okay, this is our bonding, this is the amount we need to bond and, and provide to? How, how, I mean, could, that could, we could probably declare a second reading on the same day if it's part of a, part of an ordinance, but.
Yeah, I think, to answer that question, I think the key is going to be the structure of the agreement with the CDE so that we're comfortable that we are, they are committed, that we are not getting ahead of them in terms of incurring expenses. We need to have that transaction closed.
Is there a chance that a CDE would look at our nine million versus any additional? If it, if we were to go a higher amount? Does the CDE have the discretion to say, well, we liked a nine million dollar deal, but we don't like the other one? Or is it a, or, or the numbers close enough and small enough maybe that we figure whatever our high number is would probably be funded if they're going to fund anything?
We've been told that seven million is kind of the floor of a transaction that's large enough to cover the expenses in creating the, the New Market Tax Credit and the transactions. But SB Friedman has said that it may be necessary, depending on allocations available and what they want to do with them, to possibly have more than one CDE involved in a transaction. But they've also said, and I failed, it's in my report, but I failed to mention it verbally, that Kansas has preferred status as, as a location because there's so little New Market Tax Credit activity in Kansas, that that is something that weighs in our favor. And then there's also just nationally preference given by the program for rural, non-urban projects, and Salina would, would qualify as non-urban. So what SB Friedman has said is the project in and of itself should be preferable to CDEs over a more typical urban metro area that's, that's seen a lot of projects. But that's a, in answering your question, I, I think it's going to depend on the allocation the CDEs have, what they, what other projects they've married up with and, and agreed to fund. And, but SB Friedman seems willing to shop the project around to multiples and try to fund the full amount.
Okay, the reason I ask is that as we scenario these out, I mean, our, our goal is to be under construction spring of 2016 because we have a construction schedule that we want to stick to. And so I ask for the timelines only because hypothetically, if it, if we have a construction budget that comes in higher and we have an allocation from a CDE that's at the nine million, if we, for whatever reason, needed to go back and recharter for a higher dollar amount, that would include a 61-day protest period. And so I'm just trying to figure out what the, what the worst possible scenario start date would be, and does that put us into another year of construction? And so I, I guess my point is, is that are we looking more at going towards an all-in scenario for bonding? Or are we looking at, what's our confident, confidence level that this will click along smoothly and everything will line up?
We've had some of those conversations with, with SB Friedman, but we've been limited in that because we haven't engaged them yet. But that, that is a very valid concern. From my perspective, if, this may be able to generate additional money that may be able to, to allow for cost overruns or project expansion. And the timing element of it is the hard part. At a minimum, we could pursue New Market Tax Credits on a nine million dollar deal and see if we can get one million dollars' worth of equity. Or as it plays itself out, and we get a sense of the interest in our project, we may need to talk about strategies to either incorporate that and what that means to our timeline. But it's, it's really kind of too early to say until they've gone to the market and gotten back with us in terms of what response they're getting.
Commissioners, I, I think with regards to dealing with possibly a cost overrun of, of the current scope, that we probably will be far enough into our engineering and our architectural work to sort of have a, a good idea about what the facility cost would be under the current scope before we would be locked, locked out of making, you know, of a decision to change what the allocations would be. As we should know, what the cost would be, I think, close enough by the time we get to a CDE and we really finish negotiating all that. So I, I don't sense that that's going to be an issue, whether with a 2015 or 16, for sure with the 16 allocation. What I don't know, though, is that as we talk about what you could allocate for a project scope here, up to, let's say, 11 million. Let's say that we have a project right now that we budget to be nine, but may come in a little over. But you look at a certain scope and you say, we'd, we'd like to do this and this and that. In order to do that, it's 11 million dollars. When we deal with the design timeframe and the, and the design options, and we deal with the ability to actually get the allocation, I, I don't know if you'll, if those timeframes mesh very well. That's something we'll have to continue to look at. And as Mike said, we, we'll definitely have to be nimble on our feet. But at some point, you have to make decisions with design since we're under contract for design. And if we, if we don't necessarily have all the other pieces, we may be limited in that. But we do need to get a little further in design before we think we have any challenges there. Because I can't say that we do just yet. We'll have to see, and then see how those timeframes mesh.
Okay, my, my concern just is that if we're giving SB Friedman guidance in, this is what we're looking at, are we giving them nine million? Are we giving them sort of an open, having them take an open look?
Right, they're aware of our timing concerns and questions and our desire to maximize the program. And as Jason said, it's really going to come down to how things shake out here in the near future in terms of design as well as their ability to go to the market. But SB Friedman, you know, their, their success fee goes up as the project goes up. So they're, they're open to it and motivated to maximize the project if we can. We just need to balance our timing, our construction contract, in pursuing the New Market Tax Credits.
All right, well, I appreciate all the work because this really is helpful. And so at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. And we'll start with if Mr. Beatty from the private donor group wishes to address us and maybe give us a little information as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Pat Beatty. I'm with Overland Property Group. My firm and myself were donors and fundraisers for the, and supporters of the, of the Field House and have been. I think I probably owe Mike an apology already for what I got him into.
It's a big opportunity.
You know, my firm builds apartments, and we utilize federal tax credits in order to do that. And so we were vaguely familiar with this program. Were associated with different people who, who have done this, used this tool. And actually have a member of our staff who did nothing but New Market Tax Credit transactions for several years. So we knew about it. We did, you know, by reputation, we know SB Friedman. They run in similar circles that, that we do in our, in our business. They have a very good reputation, although we've not dealt with them directly other than just our informal conversations with them since we've been working on this. Leverage Law also has a very good reputation out in the market. Speaking to a couple of things, the 2015 allocation, we've had investors that have bought tax credits from us, who've reached out to us directly about interest in the Field House and buying the credits. And, and it, it seems that the 2015 allocation is a real possibility. Speaking to your question, John, about whether a, you know, a nine or a 10 or 11 million dollar deal makes a difference, it really, in my opinion and my experience with housing tax credits, it would not. Depending on the allocation of the investor. But also, I think, and I could be wrong on this, but the CDEs sometimes can combine and do, you know, work together on a deal. This is a very attractive deal for the investor because of the location. Kansas is an underserved state. Also, it's, it is because of the, the location, the QCT, that's what made it, made it eligible. You've gotten a lot of acronyms today and have for the last couple of weeks. And I can't believe, actually, what a good job Mike did on explaining it because it is a really complex scenario. I, I do think that this is really an opportunity for our community to, not only in the state of Kansas, but elsewhere, even within our community, to show that we're, you know, cutting edge. I mean, this is really unique. This is a, a very unique opportunity for us to come up with a, a very innovative way to, you know, reduce the taxpayers' liability potential, potentially in putting money into this, or, you know, for overruns or otherwise. So I'm really excited about it. I'm, I, I will say a couple of other things. Keep in mind, I'm a developer. We're very optimistic people. Otherwise, we couldn't do what we did for a living. But what I'm seeing in the market for the housing tax credit business is that, you know, deals that we were underwriting at 86 cents are now selling for, in the low 90s. And I think that that's what we're going to find when we market this, is that we're going to be higher than 84 cents. But, you know, Mike's doing it correctly, is that's how you have to look at, is the worst-case scenario. But I wouldn't anticipate that. Just, that's my gut feeling and, and having a feel for what the CRA needs are of, of some of these investors. And then the other thing is, is in talking to people, I'm, you know, the fair market value loan that, that potentially could be bought out, and talking to people, I, I'm not, I, I couldn't find anybody who'd had that experience in the, the transaction after transactions that have been done in the New Market Tax Credit business. So I, you know, I think that that would, I think it's something that, again, that is proper, that, that we're putting in our pro forma and we're planning for. But I would, you know, based on history, I don't think that that's something we should anticipate, so. All right, we thought we were going to need this for the private sector, and, you know, the private sector really did a good job of stepping up. And we sort of took it as far as we could take it on our end without, you know, the cities, you know, it takes two to tango. And it really got to a point where we needed the city to help out. And man, I cannot thank Mike and Jason and the whole staff for going after this opportunity, at least looking at it, whether we go with it or not. We've examined it, and I think that's great.
I agree. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for the work you've done on that. Any public comment? We don't have any. We'll bring it back for action on this item and any further discussion.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 15-7274, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with SB Friedman and Company for New Market Tax Credit Consulting Services on a contingent fee basis.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 15-7274, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with SB Friedman and Company for New Markets Tax Credit Consulting Services on a contingent fee basis. Do we have any further discussion? I'd just like to just point out a couple of things. And in doing so, thank Mr. Beatty and, and the Overland Group and the private investors for seeking out the innovative and creative ways to, to finance this. It's a, it's a tricky project. I appreciate staff being able to really fully look at all the different scenarios that were possible in here and, and helping all of us making a vote on this to be informed and, and to make us all comfortable with, with where we are on this. So much appreciated with that. And just to emphasize what Mr. Beatty had said is that I do think it provides a great opportunity for us to really get out there in front of, of some of these opportunities that we, that are presented to us through things like the New Markets Tax Credits. I've been a little bit of aware of it. I know that there were conversations with some of the North Salina organization, Greg Stevens in, in particular, bringing to the attention New Markets Tax Credits when we were looking at grocery stores and affordable housing and, and other opportunities for providing low-income housing opportunities, creating job opportunities in, in these qualifying census tracts. So North Salina and two of our other census tracts up here north of Crawford certainly fit within a lot of those criteria. And so I'll just hope that we continue to look at opportunities for utilizing tools such as these New Market Tax Credits because, you know, when we talk about filling our development toolbox, these are the kind of tools that I think really help us get to some of those gap financing considerations that are often the hindrance for some of these projects moving forward. So anyway, just, it was a long way of saying thank you for, for what you've done, introducing Mike. And Mike, thanks for the, for the hard work you did on that. So if anybody else has any questions or concerns, we'll move this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. That passes five, zero. Thank you all very much, and, and again, thanks for making us all comfortable with, with where we are on this. Okay, we'll move to other businesses. Is there any other business? I know Commissioner Hardy, you went to a wrestling match.
Actually, what I wanted to, to mention was, yesterday I had the first opportunity to literally get my feet wet at Kenwood Cove. And it was, I, I've been looking forward to, to an opportunity to, to experience the park. And once I was there, I had my little float and going around the lazy river. And I was watching all the, the families and kids having a great time at, at, at the facility. And I was, I, I was thinking during that time, you know what? We're, we're so lucky here in Salina to have a facility of that quality that people don't have to drive 50 or 100 miles to go to. We've got it in our own backyard. And it's, it's, it's a great place to, to go. I'm going to start going a little more often now and maybe get the grandkids to, to come to town. I, I think, you know, it's, it's, it's a special, very special place, and I'm glad we have it.
Well, I appreciate you and Commissioner Ryan representing this commission for, you know, just to be there to show the, the city employees and everyone that we're.
I didn't see Jason or Greg.
Unfortunately, we, we picked a date that worked best for that this year. Sort of a short notice on the idea, but I already had other engagements, so I wasn't able to make it. But for next year, I, I will be there.
Right, we appreciate you putting that together for, for employees as well to show the appreciation. It's a nice asset. We should use it.
It's a wonderful asset.
Just as a quick little note here, I had the opportunity to represent the city on a couple of occasions. And one in particular was the groundbreaking for St. John's Missionary Baptist Church. They're doing a, a park and a playground and doing a nice little memorial to commemorate their 136th anniversary of being a part of this community. So they've, you know, they've gone through fires and other moves in the community. And, and it's a very resilient group, and I very much enjoyed being a part of their celebration yesterday and look forward to them putting together their park. And, and I'll just throw a plug out for them. I know they'll be looking for volunteers to help build the playground. So if you have any playground building skills, I'm sure you can get ahold of Reverend Smith, and he'll put a hammer in your hand. The other thing was, is that also attended yesterday morning the worship on the lawn at Kansas Wesleyan University. And, and they also had a nice fundraiser at the Bicentennial Center on Saturday night that, and by the way, Center on Saturday night, that, and by the way, that place is looking great, inside and out. But just think, I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome all the new college students that are new to Salina to their schools, whether it's K-State, Salina, Brown Mackey, or Kansas Wesleyan, also probably some St. John's Military Kids, school kids are here, new to town. So, I'd like to welcome all of them and welcome back all the other college students and high school students to town and back to school, and wish them all a successful school year. So, that being said, anybody else? Board reports or anything?
Well, I'm going to be looking for the Animal Advisory Board members to, I'm going to be out there knocking on doors to get people to submit an interest form for that board.
Right, and that's a board that meets four times a year, quarterly, so it's not a board that you're really committed to every month, so hopefully, we can help you find members for that.
Yeah, that's been, we've had real difficulty getting interest in, and
Right.
it's nice that there is finally interest in that board.
Yeah.
Mayor, we are, we'll ask of the commission that you add an executive session for 10 minutes for legal purposes. Kind of made reference, but I don't know if everybody heard earlier, so we're going to stick to the 10 minutes so that you can get in and get out.
Okay. And do we have business after?
I don't...
We should not. It's a matter that arose just a little bit earlier today, but should not require any action on your part.
Okay, great. Well, we'll go ahead and hear a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of these matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at 5:40.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to recess into executive session for 10 minutes and reconvene at 5:40. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. We're in exec-